Well, I've got connection through it. It's not playing through. I don't know why. You might, I mean, you might be able to use it.
Should I hold it right up to the mic?
I mean, we can change the speaker. Yeah, I mean, it shows it should be playing, why it's not. So here's what we can do. Let's switch this over to here.
It is. Do you have the presentations on you right now? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not, not critical, but it's a fantastic video that DMPD put together.
I mean, yes, we could set it up on here if you wanted to. It's up to you. I'm sorry. Yeah, I wish I could. If I click on that, do what? It'll open there. So, I mean.
And do you have Coleman on the line?
Yep.
The laptop up here.
Would you like to do attendance, please?
Voss.
Carl, I'm right here.
Simonson. Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard. Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. So I believe we have three presentations this morning, starting with the Street Collective and an update on, on the B-cycle. So we're just trying to do a little workaround with technology here.
All right, everybody. My apologies for slowing us down. I checked in on Friday and I thought we would be able to show that video seamlessly, but that's not the way it worked out this morning. We'll give it a shot in a moment, but am I up?
You are, you are on.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Jeremy Lewis. I'm the executive director of the Street Collective, a local nonprofit here founded in 2008 by the mayor Pro Tem. Let me slow down and say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you all today, council members, city manager, and everybody else in the room. Our organization was founded by a very tenacious and dedicated volunteer here who sits behind you, so it makes it for interesting. The purpose of today's conversation, brief conversation, is to bring you up to speed with our Bike Share program. But before doing that, I want to make sure everybody here is aware of some of the other programs that we have at the Street Collective. Our, our mission is to champion transportation options that are safe, accessible, and enjoyable for everyone. And we do a lot of things in the community. And when I was meeting last week with Scott and Matt Anderson to talk briefly about this presentation, one of the first questions that I heard was, you guys give away a lot of bikes, don't you? And absolutely, we give away four to 100, four to 500 bikes per year. And the next question was, are most of those coming to Des Moines? And absolutely. I like to think that our, our, our service area sort of extends as far as the bus routes go, but the far majority of the work that we're doing here is in the city of Des Moines. And the far majority of bikes that we're giving away is actually a couple of different, a handful of events that we have with Des Moines Police Department and Des Moines Parks and Rec, who sit behind me. A bike back to school, as well as a safe summer kickoff, we often give 100 or more bikes. About a year ago, Des Moines Police Department put together this 90-second video that just sort of outlines our bike giveaways and what we're able to accomplish with our community bike shop. And, and because there were some questions on, on how closely we partner with the city, I thought this was instrumental to share with everybody because it's a great one. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just put this right up to the audio. It's 90 seconds. We'll see if you guys can hear.
... and we are at the Grand YMCA. This is actually the first annual holiday bike giveaway that we've done in partnership with the Street Collective. The Street Collective and their volunteers rehabilitate all the bikes, bring them out here. We bring the holiday cheer and some of the setup, and then we get as many kids on bikes with helmets and locks and water bottles as we can.
We want them to be able to get around, to be able to have fun, to be able to get to school. We get donations literally every single day from families who tell us that they just want to make sure that every kid has the same opportunity as their kids.
You have bikes sitting in your basement, in your garage, you know, by your house that are lonely and not getting used. Get those bikes to us and we'll get them rehabilitated for kids to get on them.
We'll take absolutely anything bikish, whether it has wheels or not.
It is such a moment to see a kid get on a bike and get that gleam in their eye.
It means a lot to us that we're able to provide bikes for all these kids, even the kids who came here too late to get a bike. We're taking down a list, so we would just want to make sure that we're doing good equitable work in getting kids able to get on wheels.
The last couple of years have been really hard on everyone, so to be able to come out and share a moment like that where you get to kind of lift a kid up, this is fantastic. The volunteers are having a good time, you know, the cops are having a good time. Looks like Santa's having fun, so this is the kind of moment we live for.
Police Activities League has been amazing.
One of our mottos is engage, not enforce. If I can get a kid engaged in something, getting them on a bike means they can get to the store, they can get to the library, they can get to school. Those are the places we want them to be, so it's a win-win.
Awesome. I generally try not to embed multimedia, like I said, into these, into these meetings, but it is a special video. It was put together by Des Moines Police Department, and I think it highlights exceptionally what we're able to accomplish with the city's support. Now, we'll see if I can get back down to PowerPoint for you and we'll get back onto the thing. Uh, yeah, so we have our community bike shop in the East Village there. That location since 2013, and I don't know if you've all had the opportunity to visit there, but we take donated bikes. Everything has been donated to us. We don't purchase any of the bikes we sell or give away, but are relying on the community to continue to give those to us. We, about half of the work that we do, we restore the bikes utilizing various volunteers of different skill sets, but we have very capable employees that, that make sure everything that's going out, out of that shop is exceptional quality and, and safe. Another, another, one of our programs that we do on, on an annual basis for I don't know how many years, this is another thing that, that council member Voss has been instrumental in organizing and founding, is, is our Bike Camp. And that's another way we, we partner with Des Moines Police Department. Every single year, Carl leads a group of 10 to 15 different elementary or middle-aged school kids, and they learn a lot about riding bikes and a lot about the community, and it's about engaging kids in a very positive way. We had a new program last year because of a grant from Polk County. Polk County Supervisors, we were able to give away about 400 lightsets throughout Polk County, so that wasn't just in Des Moines, but we, we set up along trails and in different parks throughout our county to give those away. Sitting in front of you is, is a regional trail map that we update every single year. Councilmember Gatto said, are, are, is the construction on here? And absolutely, all that construction is on there. And we had to spend more money updating the map this year because of all the construction that's, that's out there, but it's a very handy thing. We give away 20,000 to 30,000 of those maps every single year. Unity Point prints it for us. We provide event parking, safe, secure event parking every single week at, at the farmer's market for six months of the year. Just this last weekend, I and a bunch of other volunteers and staff spent the weekend at 8035, where we parked 600 bikes, almost 600 bikes this weekend. It was, as you'd expect, I think we even had more bikes than usual because we're down there in Waterworks and easily accessible, somewhat easily accessible on the trails. In addition, in the last month, we do these extracurricular bike parking events at Yankee Doodle Pops. Sure you saw Axios reported that they were expecting 100,000 people down there. That's a lot of cars down there with limited space to actually park those cars. So we set up and we encourage people to have some VIP up close parking without having to rely on getting their car there and getting it out. And then a, a new event we did for the very first time this year was we partnered with Principal Charity Classic. We helped them organize a ride on the Sunday, the last day of the Gulf Sherman, and parked almost 100 people for the very first time. So pretty cool. That's not like, I'm, I'm not here to talk at length about what the Street Collective's doing. I already know I've taken more of the time. It's hard for me not to elaborate further, but I'm gonna pivot to Bike Share now, and I put together about a dozen slides to bring you up to speed with that program, and then there'll be a few minutes left over for Q and A. As it leads off, our Bike Share program, surprisingly enough, is, is the longest-running B-cycle program in the world, and I have had some people say that that might make me the longest consecutive serving executive, one of the longest conservative executive directors of a Bike Share program in the world. I say that a little tongue-in-cheek. It's truth, but we have a small, but, but a system that, that has a lot of experience doing that. We were launched again by council member Voss in 2010. We launched small. We launched with four stations and 16 bikes. That's not the way Bike Share usually works these days, but we were an early mover, and, and that's what we had available to us. But then, fast forwarding today, we have over 200 bikes that are circulating across, across the region. We have stations, 30 different stations, 25 of those stations, so the, primarily we're serving the city of Des Moines, but we also have operating agreements in three stations within Clive, Windsor Heights in West Des Moines, as well as with Polk County. I didn't mention that the revolution in Bike Share is, is electric bikes, and if any of you've had the opportunity to ride an electric bike, it's, it's an absolute game changer. It gets people riding bikes that otherwise wouldn't. We don't have an opportunity to buy anymore what we call acoustic or traditional human, exclusively human-powered bikes, so, so more than half of our fleet right now is, is, is traditional bikes, but as we move forward and as we continue to grow, there, eventually will very likely be exclusive electric. So it's, it's a regional interconnected Bike Share system, so you could park, check out a bike as far as on the east side on the Capitol and theoretically take it all the way to Campbell Park in Clive if you wanted to, and leave it there. It's open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, except in our parks. And I put this picture out here, and, and when I was showing it to somebody, they're like, are you sure you want to show them the, the picture from the New York Times that has six inches of, of snow all over your equipment? I want to point that and then juxtapose to an absolutely gorgeous day at Lawrence's Skate Park. That Drake area is, is, is my neck of the woods, and we're a small organization, and those are the stations that I'm actually responsible for anytime it snows. And, and I would say I was probably out there at that Drake station within an hour or two of the New York Times who took that photo when, when we had some caucus-related stuff earlier this winter. But that's an anomaly. We do get snow, but we, you know, we knock the snow off the bikes. We, we clear the, the area around it, including often the DART station to be a good community member, and then those bikes are ready to go as soon as things warm up. If it's zero degrees in the middle of winter and then jumped up to 40 degrees, we will have, you know, people riding in January and February. So literally year-round, people are using this service. A lot of systems pull their bikes off during the winter, but we felt, I felt, we felt pretty strongly that to be a legitimate form of transportation, we wanted to be able to provide that to the people reliably year-round. This is a quick snapshot of, of what Des Moines looks like. You can't see everything. You can't see down south in Easter Lake there, where we have one of our newest stations, but also, well, in the last three years, but also a highly utilized, a top-five station. As you can see, we're up there in Drake neighborhood, as I said, east, all the way to the Capitol, and then west, as far as right now, 23rd and Ingersoll. You can't see on there Clive and Windsor Heights in West Des Moines, but I wanted you to be able to drill down to what's available here in Des Moines. How many people have used Bike Share? Two.
I have.
Was that council member Coleman?
Yeah.
Excellent. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to use it here. It's pretty straightforward, like in most other cities. We used to have a kiosk. We still have kiosks out there, but we've actually turned off those kiosks. Used to be able to walk up and put a credit card in there, but the way the system, you know, the future, the way, the, the, the environment we're in right now is everything is exclusively app-based, and that's what we're relying on for 100% of our trips right now. So you pull out your smartphone, you all could take a snapshot of that QR code right there and check out a bike from Burton Skating Plaza if you wanted to. But so you download the app, you, you walk up to any station, you check out a bike, you adjust the seat. It works for anybody that's four, five, up to basically at six, five, so there's a lot of movement there. You turn on the power button, if that's still your thing, and then go. And then you can ride for as long as you want. We sell them passes by the minute, by the hour. The most affordable way to ride our program, if you're gonna do it with any sort of regularity, is what's what we call the 30-30-30 pass. 30 days, 30-minute rides for the $30, or you can become an annual member. Like I said, what's key is just not to lea, and what I think the city really appreciates about our system is that it's a station-based program. We're not gonna have bikes laying around absolutely everywhere if we have anything to, to say about it. If they choose not to, to properly dock their station, well, I have a credit card associated with every, every checkout, provided there's money, enough money on that credit card, they'll be charged. If it's not returned properly. Wanted to share some numbers with you, some analytics, so a handful of slides here real quickly to go through with, talk about who's using it, et cetera. This first snapshot is, is who's using it, and that sort of yellow blob there, if, is on the north side, you have Stalerville, and then that's probably like a 15-mile ring that, that we drew, the NPO drew for me. I don't have the capacity to put these sort of things together. Azee at the NPO has been fabulous with these sort of things. And as you would expect, the dark area, the red, the darker colors in the middle is where there's the most population density, so I should say, these are checkouts, what zip code is associated with each checkout. And as you'd expect, most are coming from right here in the urban core, but it continues throughout our entire region. Backing up a little bit further on the right-hand side, you can see the state of Iowa there. Again, darker colors, they're coming from the middle of, of the state, but really, we have riders, and this, this is over the course of a year, coming from everywhere in Iowa and everywhere around Iowa, and then you snap back up a little bit more, and you can see that visitors from across the country are utilizing the service. Yes. The zip codes associated with credit cards.
Okay. So it, can you correlate it with where they checked out, like what station? I mean, so when you have someone who's coming from a suburb.
Yes.
Do you know, did they check it out Saturday morning at the farmer's market, or do we have that ability?
I don't have the capacity to do that, but I bet there are GIS and technological experts at the city of Des Moines or the NPO that could, you know, slice and dice that data to show you that information.
We have the data, we just don't have the capacity to analyze it.
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah. When's it being used? This is 2024. We have data that goes back all the way to 2010, so fast forward 14 years, and you might be surprised to see that people are checking out bikes throughout the day, back to that 24/7 thing. So we have people in the middle of the night for various reasons that are checking out bikes at the lowest is, is there at 6:00 AM in the morning, but then, as, as the day progresses, it continues to increase until about 10 o'clock at night. They're ridden every single day of the week. That snapshot on the left side are the days that's actually checked out, and as you'd expect, the busiest times are on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Stepping back since 2010, and I, for full disclosure, just took this picture around 4th of July time. I wanted to say that's Easter Lake, but I figured some might know, notice otherwise, but that's, that's out in West Des Moines, and that's not unusual that we see an entire family, or what appears to be an entire family, that, that most of them are checking out a bike. So they could pull up at Raccoon River Park and throw their kid's bike in the back of their car, but they don't have probably the capacity to throw those adult bikes in, so they walk up to a station and check out a bike and spend 30 minutes riding around the lake. So since we launched, we've had over 130,000 trips. There's been over 50,000 unique users, almost 900,000 miles were, were traveled, and those, I want to be clear that those are estimates. We don't have exactly what they are, the miles traveled. Over 800,000 pounds of carbon are offset, and 35,252 and 392 calories were estimated burned, which translates, I was gonna look up cake, but it is rag-bri time, and I know some of members of council love their pie, so we translated, you know, I, I asked ChatGPT, how many, if I have 35 million calories, how many slices of pie that is, and that translates to 115,000 slices of pie there for you burned during our history. Top performing stations, real quick, and, and this, this, this is from 2022, so there are, there is one station there that, that has only been there during that time. All of them have been there prior to that, but since 2022, these are our top, top performing stations, and this is pretty symbolic and representative of, of the past as well, but Burton Skating Plaza, right next to you, is Orazar, and located on Parks operated area at Burton Skating Plaza, Wellmark on 13th and Grand, Hy-Vee on Fourth and Court, LifeServe in East Village, the Polk County Administrative Building on Second Court, Waterworks Park, ever since we put that in there about four years ago, has, has done excellent. The Science Center, Easter Lake, Easter Lake, Polk County Conservation, just, you know, did that, all that fabulous work on the North Shore. We had to temporarily relocate, they decided to temporarily relocate the station to another area of the park. It is now back in that North Shore. They poured a permanent pad before, we were just taking up some parking spaces and, and put in electricity. Nationwide Building on 10th and Walnut, so pretty close to, we'll have a couple of stations when you guys make the move here in a couple of years. And then Lawrence's Skate Park, our newest station on this group. We just put it installed late last year, and we have seen it is siphoning off some of our traffic from Burton Skating Plaza, but it's, it's doing very well.
What are your plans for future locations?
I'll get there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Excellent question, because right now we are, I, I misspoke to the city manager, he said, are you operating in every, in every council member's district? And we're not. Councilmember Westergaard, right now I have plans to get in your area, and we'll see a map of what that looks like, what's possible, but right now, we're not. Who's paying for this? Often, every, decision-makers, number-one question in, in this, I can't emphasize, this is a public-private partnership. It is absolutely reliant on public dollars, on private dollars, and our nonprofit organization to make this work. Equipment is not cheap. A bike is around $3,000. A station is around $25,000. We don't have the money laying around to purchase these sort of things, so I'm reliant on state grants or federal grants or local developers to actually purchase that equipment, and then we operate that moving forward. So fair box recovery rate, you probably have heard that term now, all the talk with DART, and that is how much, how much revenue, how much of your operating costs are covered by users. DART is somewhere around 10 to 15%. Our fair box recovery rate is, is 50-plus percent. So that means 50% are coming from the users, but the other half has to come from somewhere else and, and back to that public-private partnership concept. So we have operating agreements with the city of Des Moines. We've had an operating agreements where they subsidize our program with an economic development grant since 2010. In the last five years, we have operating, similar operating agreements, five-year operating agreements at a time with West Des Moines, Clive, and Windsor Heights, and as I said, Polk County as well. And I know I've gone too long, so I promise I'm gonna, I'm gonna speed it up here. I want to take, I'm gonna read it all these people, because this, 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 our system would not exist without investments from a lot of these local companies, Seaberry, Hubble, Jake Christensen, Christensen Developments, City of Clive, City of Des Moines, DART. DART doesn't give us money directly, but DART on an annual basis is able to apply for grant funding where, that we use to replace and repair existing equipment. That's money that comes through the NPO, but our nonprofit cannot apply for money, so we're relying on cities or governments like that to do so on our behalf. Drake University, we just signed up a new contract with Drake University. It's sort of been languishing, but the chief of staff last month told me he's gonna get 250 people signed up this year. I hope that's the case. HDR, local company right over here, has been great. Hy-Vee, Iowa Department of Transportation, Mid-American Energy, Newberry Living, Frank Levy, Prairie Meadows, every single year just got my announcement, $10,000, so I can buy five more electric bikes next year. Principal Financial Group, US Department of Transportation, Veridian Credit Union, one of our longest-running partners, and the Wellmark Foundation. All of these people have given us at least $50,000, so what I'm considering a major donor. I slapped on a logo of the Des Moines Arts Center. That is, that's, they, I just signed an operating agreement with them. We're putting their decals into production right now, $30,000 over three years. So they don't, really technically shouldn't be up there, but I'm always excited about bringing on new people, and, and multi-year agreements are, are fantastic. They have two stations, and they have five bikes they're advertising on. Just took a stock photo. I was trying to look at my, a picture of myself stressing, looking at my computer, trying to figure out how we're gonna make dollars work, just like you all are right now every so few years. This is not a normal business. This is more like a public service or a public utility. You are not going to make money. Nobody that I can tell, big Ford, Uber, Lyft, Lime, large, powerful companies around the world have tried to figure out how to make money, putting a lot of money into Bike Share. Nobody's figured out how to do it yet. We will not make money doing this, so we're doing this for another reason. But as an operator, the first I gotta do, I gotta fundraise to actually buy the equipment, and then I gotta fundraise to operate the equipment, and then I gotta fundraise to maintain the equipment and replace the equipment, so there's fundraising, fundraising, fundraising all along, and then that's not just it. Then I have to reach out to the public for a permission to place it. That's often not an easy thing to do. Some developers that aren't, don't really understand how our business works, want us to pay to put our, put our station there, whereas I want them to see it as an amenity that will bring more people to their business or that their actual residents could utilize. It's different now than it used to be. Most people get it and understand it now, but I do have to figure out where to put it, get permission, and it has to make sense with the rest of our system. Challenges. I've already outlined some of the challenges. I'll just, I grabbed a few pictures. The picture on the left is a picture that was showed me from Instagram just last week. It's of some kid, it, it was a post from two years ago, but somebody was concerned. It was in real time, and it's some kid that's talking about grabbing a bike and putting it in the back of their car, and I have no idea what ended up with that particular bike. Sometimes there's Sometimes there's vandalism, it's not deliberate vandalism, that's not the right word, but there's accidents happen. So when there's all that snow this last, this last year up at Smoky Grove, somebody who was clearing the path, that is a taco back wheel right there. I could tell by looking at the picture that it was just a snowplow that ran into it. Nobody, nobody fessed up to it or anything like that, but these things sort of happen. Things go missing, things get broken. I got a picture of a light that you can't totally tell, but it's just been basically ripped off there. But you also see a picture of a shackle on one of our batteries. We had to fabricate that shackle ourselves. The bikes didn't come that way. We found when we put them out there, our $500 battery, Bosch battery, people want to take them, even if there's nothing they can do for it. So what do we do? We retrofitted with some extra steel and put a lock on there and we don't have people taking them nearly as easy now. Somebody thought they would just rip the actual dock off of the, the steel station right there, uh, a couple of years ago. So people are dumb sometimes. People mistreat our equipment sometimes for various reasons, but those are just some of the costs of doing business.
Jeremy, do you have, um, uh, trackers on your bikes now that you can tell where they?
Yeah, excellent question. So, um, we have active GPS units on all of our electric bikes right now. Thank you to the City of Des Moines and for ARPA dollars. We, last year received a grant for $100,000. Then it went to replacing some old equipment to getting more electric bikes and importantly outfitting every single one of our electric bikes with GPS data, which, uh, Councilmember Manobal was talking about data and the amount of data we have. Now that we have these active GPS units on there, we can see more precisely where all these bikes are going. We could drill down to the exact streets where these are traveling and when they are. And so we look forward to be able to share that information with you all in the future. And yes, the active GPS units have been key in, in helping us, uh, keep track of these bikes. We're, uh, user-generated revenue only goes so far, as I said before, relying on constant corporate and local support. And I, I wanted to put this in here. This is, this is a new thing, post-pandemic bike boom. You've all heard that in 20 and 2021 and 2022, everybody was riding their bikes that had an interest in bikes. And that meant everybody was, a lot of the bike shops didn't have bikes, but we didn't run out. We totally closed our doors almost to the, to the public, didn't let anybody in for an entire year, but we sold more bikes. We gave away the same amount of bikes and we sold like 40% more bikes than we ever had during 2020. In 2021, they're still off the charts. In 2022 and 2023, they sustained the demand for actually buying bikes, uh, bikes that help us, I should say. Selling bikes also subsidizes our Bike Share program. But then fast forward to today, I, I noticed in June, our numbers dropped off, dropped off pretty significantly, a lot less than what I budgeted for. I don't know what July holds. I don't know what August holds, but it does make sense. And this is what I'm hearing from around the country is that the demand for buying new bikes isn't the same as it was the last few years. And that means that I need to raise money somewhere else to subsidize the program. So there is a consistent demand for affordable, accessible Bike Share. I don't think it's gonna go, go away anytime soon. I won't spend time outlining how the Bike Share program aligns with, uh, the mission and goals of the City of Des Moines. A few things, Move DSM, Vision Zero, Plan DSM, Adapt DSM, all specifically call out Bike Share. The benefits, uh, economic, environmental, uh, urban planning, tourism, as I was pointing out before, social equity, et cetera. And to close, real, as quick as I can, uh, there's a map of, of what the future could look like. I got the blacks, uh, Councilmember Simonsen, uh, the black stations are existing stations. The red stations are the future, uh, a future that's, that's to be determined, but these are, are in general, uh, quality locations if, if we can find the dollars to actually make it work. So I wanted to come here. I like to always present, I, my, 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 my personality is that I wanna have a very positive vision for where we're going. I want, I wanna set the stage for, for, for constant improvement. But we're in a, we're in a, we're in a challenging moment right now. I'm not exactly sure what's, what's gonna shake out with our Bike Share program in the future. So I sort of laid out three options. We, we can stay the course, uh, if, if the amount of, of public support, uh, from, from the cities and from our area employers, if they still have, find the value in it, we'll be able to incrementally grow our program, um, as option one. Option two, uh, and I, I haven't made this clear, but it, this last year, corporate support has been, it, it's drying up right now. It doesn't mean that, you've probably heard this with all, lots of other nonprofits that come up in front of you. Fundraising seems to be more challenging right now in this post, post, post pandemic sort of environment we're in. I'm optimistic that we're gonna close some more deals here in the future, but frankly, right now, I'm just, I'm out there fishing, uh, trying to get people's support. Option one, stay the course. Option two, reduce or eliminate services. It's not what we wanna do. I put down reduce. I don't really know how we could reduce services. It wouldn't, it wouldn't cut the budget enough. So when, when Bike Share doesn't work, you don't often see them just systems, you don't see systems just closing one or two stations and not fixing the problem. You see stations, you see systems going away. Or option three, um, that, this is an option and this is the route that many cities take and that is to invest more significantly, uh, to have a more robust, uh, Bike Share program right out of the gate and, and that's potentially what it can look like.
Jeremy, can you, uh, tell us what the other communities have contributed to?
Financially speaking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Our operating room with the City of Des Moines from Economic Development is $15,000 a year. That increased in the last year from 12,000 when we, uh, got to a certain additional level of bikes and stations. I can tell you right now, West Des Moines, Clive and Windsor Heights are each paying $5,000 a year. So each station, if you break down my budget, it's gonna cost about $9,000 per station per year. So $5,000 for up to three stations is what I am, I'm offering other communities. And Polk County Conservation has a similar, uh, partnership with us for their two stations at Lawrence and Skate Park and Easter Lake.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jeremy, how does that compare with, uh, city support from some other operators in your, in your peer groups?
Yeah. There's no one way, uh, people are running these businesses and I have been fortunate enough to develop relationships with, as you'd expect, some of our, uh, more, uh, systems that are closer to us. So I'll just give two examples, uh, Kansas City and Omaha. Both started their programs after ours. Both, uh, were, when we, when I started doing this work in 2013, were maybe twice the size of our program, uh, but now have grown significantly faster, uh, and, and larger. Kansas City is in the position, well, both Kansas City and Omaha receive, uh, six-figure annual donations from their cities, six figures plus. Kansas City, uh, has a 5.8 cent, uh, uh, sales tax that's dedicated to transit funding and their Bike Share program gets a sliver of it. Again, over six figures. They don't know exactly what it's gonna be every year, but over $100,000 they can use for operating dollars. And that's what I'm always looking for, operating dollars. How do I pay the staff to keep this thing going? And then, uh, what do we see going on, uh, in, in Omaha? Omaha explicitly does not want to give money to their Bike Share program. They don't just cut a check to Heartland Bike Share and say, use this as you want, but, uh, they have a collaboration, a cooperation where they're giving money in different ways. One example is this is that they pay for their software program, their software fees. I pay about $50,000 in software fees for my system. They pay over $120,000 in software fees alone. The City of Omaha purchases the equipment for them. Most recently purchased, uh, the vehicles that they use to, some of the vehicles, they insure the vehicles that they use to do the balancing. They purchase stations outright themselves as well. These are things that, that's not going on in the City of Des Moines and, and I understand there are limited tax dollars available to things, but, but I am optimistic that, uh, there's the potential for even more cooperation. I talked about GIS. They have staff available. The City of Omaha has staff that the Heartland Beach Bike Share can call when they have technical questions like that. We, we, we don't have that right now with the City of Des Moines. Doesn't mean it's not possible, uh, but, but, uh, it would be very advantageous to us.
Jeremy, I have found this to be interesting, informative. I would suggest the next time you present to us that you include what the peer groups are doing, dollar-wise, otherwise in writing, so we have it as part of our packet. That would be informative.
Understood.
All right. Jeremy, thank you. And, uh, Matt Anderson, thank you for saving our bacon about 20, 2012 or so that I was ready to throw in the towel. And, and you told me no, that we had to go forward. So thanks again. I don't think we'd be here without, uh, Matt diving in and helping with some solutions. So thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much, everybody. I know I went over on my time. My apologies.
Okay. Next up. Do you wanna do an introduction first? All right. So let's see, Grayslake on the agenda again here, so.
Mayor Pro Tem Voss, Members of Des Moines City Council, I'm Ben Page, Parks and Recreation Director. We're thankful to be here to have the next two hours plus to hopefully get you through our two items here. No, no, as you know, we, we're quick. We have some really exciting updates here. First up is the Grayslake Playground and Sprayground Project. I'd like to tee that up for you just in a couple of comments. Those of you who were on the City Council in 2016 might remember the Grayslake Master Plan Update. It's one of the most used parks, not just in our city, but in the state of Iowa. Over a million people per year are tracked along that trail making loops. One of the things you saw is a lot of use. So it was time to update Grayslake, not just with a shotgun approach, but a system-wide approach. What would the park need moving forward after 2016? You might also require, remember that was two really good improvements that happened out of this plan. First and, and donated, mostly donated projects. The Rouen Connector and the Chris and Marcy Coleman Bridge came out of that plan. Next up, the, the group, the number one advocate, Rick Newman, who's watching live from New York City today, has brought us together, the community, the city and this process to donate the playground and spray ground. That's the goal of the fundraiser. You all signed an agreement with Rick and his group a while back and there's three checkpoints. Checkpoint one happens tonight on your council agenda if you're happy with what you see today. And that means taking the concepts that you'll see today into the construction document phases. And then city engineering will manage that process with Parks and Recreation. And then that will go out for ordering construction if you're happy at the time when that comes to you next. The last checkpoint you'll get with Rick Newman and his team will be making sure that the fundraising has happened and then you can award that contract. Again, this is predicted to be a fundraiser project, 100% of non-city dollars. So I'm gonna ask John Aceto from Confluence Design to come up, walk you through the playground and spray ground project here, and then if you have questions, we'll be glad to take them.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As Ben said, my name's John Aceto. I'm a landscape architect with Confluence Landscape Architecture, uh, brought on, uh, with Rick Newman and his team and also alongside City of Des Moines, uh, to come up with some design concepts for, uh, playground and splash pad for Grayslake Park. So just some overall context, uh, everyone here is familiar with Grayslake, I'm assuming. So the existing playground, uh, you can see highlighted and then compared to the proposed splash pad and playground area, uh, right by the concession stand, just south of the Coleman Bridge. And in context with downtown, this is, you know, very adjacent to downtown and will have a, a really strong connection with the Coleman Bridge and, uh, just that prime location in Grayslake. As Ben had alluded to earlier, this comes out of a, a long, uh, master plan update study performed in 2015, 2016 alongside the Grayslake Advisory Committee. And this area was identified as the successor spot to the playground. And then alongside that, uh, the addition of a splash pad as well. So just some overall project goals that we, uh, have come up with along the way. Catering to a wide range of ages and abilities. You'll see this later on, but, uh, we're trying to appeal to, as Ben had said, the most popular playground in the state of Iowa. So, um, having that wide range of accessibility and thinking about intergenerational, uh, caretakers, parents being able to use this park as well. And building off of that, accommodating both physical activity and passive experiences. So thinking holistically about what play is, uh, we think in a very traditional sense of, you know, spinning, climbing, all of those aspects, but thinking from a full range of developmental benefits and using, uh, social development and cognitive development as also, um, important aspects of the play experience. Minimizing maintenance in a flood prone, flood prone area. So, uh, we all know that this area floods, uh, quite frequently. So, uh, one of the challenges that we have been faced with is how to, uh, make this area still operational if and when it does flood. So looking at resilient materials and the ability to create a low maintenance where if it floods, when the water recedes, we're able to hose off and pick up from where we left off. Blending with the natural setting while also utilizing our contemporary architectural form. So, uh, Grayslake, we really want to play on the natural systems. So the hydrology of the site, you'll see as we get more into the design, you'll see a, a more natural color palette alongside, uh, the use of stone plants and also trying to mimic kind of the natural systems that you'd find in a wetland or, uh, river, uh, setting that you find Grayslake in. And then providing an iconic and vertical main play structure. So you'll also see, uh, as we move more into design, that we wanna create that iconic focal point space, uh, really building off of this playground being a transformative playground for your park system. So looking at public engagement, this has been an ongoing process since, uh, we began the initial, uh, initial master planning phase, uh, a little over a year ago. So, uh, we had our initial visual preferencing, uh, about this time last year, a little later than last year, um, alongside ongoing neighborhood association reach out, reach out and, um, a mix of in-person and online, uh, surveys and making sure that we're just keeping the conversation going. Social media updates have been ongoing and conversations with, uh, different stakeholder groups. So just looking at some of the initial process, uh, coming from that initial public engagement, these are just some preliminary precedent study and layouts. We, uh, identified early on from the master plan update where the playground was, explored the different ways that we can push and pull from that master plan, ultimately landing back where we had originally started of the identified location, just south of the Coleman Bridge. And then just an analysis of some comparable playgrounds and splash pads. You can see Greenwood Park, Ashley Oakland, uh, Star Playground, um, and Triumph Park Playground and Waqee and Ashby Park Splash Pad. Just some general square footages. These are comparable, uh, footprints that we, we were, uh, aiming to build upon. And then looking at how that applies to our concept, uh, we broke down that the playground would be around the same size as, uh, those, the Ashley Oakland Playground, but we are proposing one of the largest splash pads in the Des Moines Metro. Which leads us, the drumroll, to, uh, our final, uh, master plan concept. So, uh, as we were talking earlier, we're, we're hoping to move into construction documentation. So more of the finer details, material selection, specifications, uh, that will be ongoing throughout that process. But in terms of spatial organization, um, equipment selection, for the most part, um, overarching details, uh, have been selected. So, uh, just running through this concept quickly, uh, you can see kind of the zigzag, the brown zigzag throughout is meant to mimic a board form, uh, concrete boardwalk. So this is meant to, going back to that passive experience as well, give it almost like a, a Japanese garden or, or zen sort of, uh, way to meander through, uh, the site. And you can see that, that central focal point being that, uh, main spray ground and five to 12, uh, play equipment. So that's where you're going to find your vertical structure and your more traditional splash pad, uh, materials. splash pad materials. And then bounding either side of that, you can see the naturalized sprayground to the left and the riparian runnel to the right. So both of those are meant to sort of mimic the natural hydrology. So riparian runnel will actually have that native wetland aesthetic to it with plantings and bounded by rock. Naturalized sprayground will be where the water from the sprayground, traditional sprayground itself flows and is meant to mimic a river scene and more, you know, natural exploration. And then you can also see along the side, three different paths for different playground programmatic elements, and then throughout different seating elements. So as we said, in terms of accessibility and inclusivity, we did a study with our playground manufacturer of just the different, approaching the accessibility and inclusivity from a developmental benefit. So looking at both cognitive, social, and physical development benefits that the equipment is meant to exemplify. And then accommodating diverse needs. So this has been an ongoing conversation, you know, looking beyond inclusivity to all the wide range of requirements needed for different ability groups. So cognitive and physical disabilities. So looking at the different ground play experiences and providing wheelchair accessibility throughout the site with the rubberized surfacing. And as we said, this is an ongoing conversation. I know we've had conversations on how to increase wheelchair accessibility. So we've even gone back and changed out some equipment to increase the wheelchair accessibility, but also looking at different ways that we can increase imaginative play and socializing. So I'm just going to go through a couple of these perspectives just to give you a better overall view of the site. So this is looking south towards Grayslake. Imagine hovering directly above the Raccoon River and Coleman Bridge. And then this is looking north, above Grayslake, looking north to Raccoon River. You can see that central playground and splash pad, and then a swing set and different play programming. So looking, zooming in specifically on splash pad elements, you can see we have highlighted the traditional sprayground, the runnel, and the naturalized sprayground. We'll take a couple, we'll look at a couple perspectives of these elements. So this is that traditional splash pad. You can see this is where we have the more traditional stainless steel equipment that comes out of the ground, both an array of the vertical equipment and ground nozzle sprays. And this is also looking back on the flood maintenance. So in case of flooding, these are easily removable. And when floodwaters recede, it's intended that these can easily be washed out and reassembled. Looking in context with Plaza, so this is table and chair seating for parents and caretakers adjacent to the concessions building. I will highlight this area more. So this is the naturalized sprayground. So this is additional, more sculptural equipment. We've been calling this water movement sculptural equipment, and this is meant to provide that kind of cause and effect. You move water throughout a basin with this equipment, and it's meant to be that kind of beautiful sculptural element while also providing that cause and effect tactile experience. And this is looking at the native riparian runnel, so mimicking a natural landscape. We intend to have native grass and sedges and bounded by rock and really be able to give that experience as well. And this is just looking to the south of the natural sprayground. So looking at dry play elements, we have those four pads highlighted. Five to 12 playground, that's going to be for your older children. It's meant to be that vertical structure and more challenging physical play. The two to five age playground, otherwise called tot lots in a lot of contexts, this is for your younger children. So this will be your smaller play structure alongside some different more social and imaginative language development as well. Sensory respite and active play, this is a major element for thinking about children who may be relaxed and find a way to decompress in what can be an over-stimulating environment in many ways. And then also providing areas for, we're calling them playhouses as well, so encouraging that imaginative play. And then you can also see this wheelchair accessible merry-go-round. So this is kind of a newer innovation from our playground manufacturer, which allows for a completely wheelchair accessible experience on the spinner. Looking at that five to 12 play structure, so this is that kind of iconic vertical structure. You can see the natural palette, trying to highlight a couple of different goals there in terms of maximizing that natural aesthetic. And you can see some net play and climbers that are also scattered on this pad as well. This is the tot lot, so you can see that the smaller scale structure, and then we have an imaginative play area as well off to the side there. And then seating throughout for that intergenerational connection, being able to keep an eye on your kiddos. Swing set, so this is that view of a swing user looking out to Grayslake. We're really just trying to maximize on that awesome view that they would have out to Grayslake. So looking at estimated timeline, we have been working through our permitting and approvals, preparing a design team for the construction document portion of the project, working toward a bid set release of early next year, groundbreaking spring '25, and then substantial completion of next fall. And then just some next steps, just getting that, like we said, contract approval to begin that construction documents, and then working through the required permitting with the DNR, Army Corps of Engineers, and City of Des Moines. And as Ben had talked about earlier, this is being a 100% fundraising project, no city dollars going towards this project. So all this kind of contingent on those fundraising goals as well. I think that is it for this presentation. Are there any questions?
Do you have a SWI, get dollars, what this?
Right now, as the concept goes from concept to bid documents, we'll get a better number, but for today's purposes, all-in consultant fees, core permits, we're targeting around $2.5 million.
And where are you at with the fundraising right now?
Right now, quietly, we really haven't begun, as you know, because we haven't involved you all yet, but we have about $400,000, which we'll pay for this contract tonight, plus have a little bit of money left over to kick us off. Tonight, if this consideration is approved, we'll kick off the official fundraising. There's a task force that's already kind of volunteered to put together. They'll start to meet in earnest about a week or 10 days soon as we can get calendars to align. And it is Grayslake. Fundraising is not easy, but I do think this is a beautiful design. I think it will lend itself to a successful fundraising venture here.
In terms of size, how does this compare with the new north shore playground area at Easter Lake?
We appreciate, and we have a great relationship with Polk County, but we're always going to be a little bit better than them. So we'll be bigger and nicer.
Of course, but in terms of square footage or?
I don't have that exact number to compare, but we can get that to you here. That's, but as you see, like if you're familiar, when you helped us dedicate at Ashley Oakland, it's going to be a little bit bigger than Ashley Oakland, the time you add the playground with the sprayground. So it'll become one of our largest play centralized features.
Ben, are we doing anything special for security? The park closes at dusk, correct?
10:00 PM.
Are we doing anything for security?
We have a great security plan in place. So as school gets out, we work with the Des Moines Police Department. They help us, not every day of the week, but most of the busy days, starting about Thursday through Sunday, they help us close. They are there for mostly evening hours. And then we have a rotating police force that helps us in the Parks Department, and we can tell them wherever experiencing issues at, we can tell them where to go each day. So it's been a pretty good relationship.
Are we finding any cameras?
No cameras at this point in time. One of the issues is bringing in the fiber to make them work. Grayslake does not have fiber in and around the park. So pretty expensive front-end cost to get the cameras going. So temporary cameras once in a while.
And staff in the boat area?
Yeah, and this is one of the few parks that has a lot of staff here, too. So it does, we don't see much at all for vandalism at Grayslake at all, occasional little graffiti here and there, but nothing, nothing large.
Ben, you always have these fun projects.
We should, right? We're Parks and Recreation, we should have the fun projects.
And Ben, since Rick Newman is watching this, as a city, we'd like to thank you, Rick, for your time, passion, and other resources in advancing this project.
Yeah, the original $400,000 is 100% Rick's win, so we want to thank Rick. And Rick will be back in a couple of weeks to help us, though.
Thank you.
And you're very confident that if and when it does flood, that we're not going to have any substantial long-term damage?
That's the way it's designed. So for example, we don't have a sprayground today. I'm surprised you didn't ask about that, but those can be capped, so no bad water gets in. The rest of it should be able just to be hosed off. A lot of concrete, steel, and plastic is in the design today.
Okay, Ben and team, thank you.
Thank you.
But don't drift too far.
John can leave. John gets out of here. All right. Next up is our Trust for Public Lands Park Score. It's a national nonprofit we began partnering with quite a number of years ago. One of the things they do, beyond many other things, is they take the top 100 largest cities by population, and they give you a ranking based upon how well you serve your community per capita in physical amenities. So today won't include things like you already subsidized nicely with the new summer camp program, a lot of the different youth sports for $5. That's not included here, but I want you to keep that in the back of your mind. Just think of the overall impact we have as the team when we put together all these Parks and Recreation services. One of the things that's important to all our departments is to always look at how well we're doing when we talk about, based on our peer cities, what they provide. So this is one of the very few analytical tools in our toolbox that we can use to see how well we're providing these services. I do want to thank a lot of folks real quickly, I'll be brief, but this Park Score can only happen with a lot of people working together, including not just the wonderful staff we have at Parks and Recreation, but there's city finance, there's city HR, there's city facilities and city engineering to help build these physical amenities, right? And there's the Park and Recreation Board, and it culminates with the city manager and all of you approving the dollars we get to build these things. So this is the result of a lot of people rowing together, and I'm excited to also maybe tee up one more quick thing is, Thursday, for those that can make our tour, you'll get to see some of these things that have recently been done, and I want to thank you for all those great dollars you've put into the parks budget and those tough challenges we've had to work with limited dollars in the community. So I'm going to have Daniel Calvert from our team, he's our expert and our staff liaison to the Trust for Public Lands, walk you through what's all involved and what the analytics are, and then we can take questions at the end.
Yeah, thank you, Ben. Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem Voss and council members. Daniel Calvert, Development and Planning Administrator. Today, it is my pleasure to present, celebrate, and discuss the Trust for Public Lands 2024 City of Des Moines Park Score. The presentation will begin with a high-level overview of TPL Park Score, as well as a relation to the top 100 cities that are ranked by TPL in Park Score. And then we'll end with a SWOT analysis that shows, as it relates to our metrics, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So first of all, what is the TPL Park Score? It's compiled from a comprehensive analysis of five key metrics. The TPL Park Score Index, or ranking, is comprised of the 100 most populous US city park systems. The metrics for Park Score include acreage, which includes park size and percentage of the city that is dedicated to Parks and Recreation; investment, which is a three-year rolling average of capital spending per resident in the City of Des Moines, which includes not only the City of Des Moines, but also our partners, Polk County, Friends of Des Moines Parks, Icon, and others. Then we get into amenities. There are six key amenities that cover a wide range of demographics, and those amenities are spraygrounds, playgrounds, centers, restrooms, and basketball hoops. And then access, which is probably the most well-known metric of TPL Park Score, which is the percent of residents within a 10-minute walk of a park, which, if you look at a grid, is a half-mile walking distance. This takes into account physical barriers such as interstates and other physical barriers that restrict movement. Equity is the last metric, and that is including racial and economic demographics and measures for park access and park size acreage that is available to those demographic groups. So now we'll look at our map here that shows park access on the top. You can see the Parks in green, and the area in purple is showing the areas that do not currently have a 10-minute walk access to a park. The deeper blue, or sorry, purple areas show other factors that are included to prioritize where a new park or park access is most vital to certain demographic groups. And those include things such as income rates, health indicators such as obesity. The acreage score down below there, which is in orange, you can see, remained consistent in this year's score from last year at 72. We didn't have a lot of acquisition or new parkland added to our system. Access, we saw a great increase of 10 points over last year, and this is in large part due to our partnership with the Des Moines Public Schools, in which we have a 28E that allows access to five new park sites within Des Moines Public Schools. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then you can see, lastly, the investment, again, that three-year rolling average that continues to increase, and not only shows our commitment, but our partners' commitments to Parks and Recreation investment within the City of Des Moines. Next, you see a map that represents equity components. And so there's two different components, income and racial economic, or racial and economic components, as it relates to park size and park access. So it gets a little tricky, we'll get into that a little bit later. There's some system historical restrictions, such as our large legacy parks and where those are located, that create some of those that are captured in this and affect our equity score. So Des Moines did see an increase in the amenities, and that's due to new parks such as Cohen Park and that partnership with Des Moines Public Schools. We also saw a slight or minor increase in equity, and again, that was due to the fact that we opened up some of those sites with Des Moines Public Schools, providing access to brown and black communities to parkland. Yeah. No, absolutely.
When you talk about the accessibility in the 28E agreement?
Yeah.
I see Earl Rowdean Park at Harding is on there. In all the years, they've never had a restroom, and now I drove by the other day, and there's a Kaibo there. Did we do that, or did that? Okay.
So in that 28E, the agreement, a lot of the historical parks that were opened up, those five parks, we gave money in the 90s, 2000s, and then some of the newer parks like Week School, Middle School Park that we gave money to, they maintain and operate those facilities for us, but allow access after they are able to fulfill whatever their primary components are for their programming they have for recess and other things.
I've just been asking for a Kaibo for a long time there, and yesterday?
They must have heard you.
There was one there.
They must have heard you.
And Daniel, before you go to the next slide?
Yep.
How does the Des Moines Metro area rank among the just population 100 cities?
Yeah, great question. So with the updated census data, we dropped to about 107, I believe it is, so we're just outside of that top 100, and we're not close enough that we can really bump up. And years prior, we were at like 102, and there were a few cities that didn't participate, probably because they're at the bottom of the rung, and so we were able to bump up into there. But because of our relationship with TPL, we still participate. We're one of the only. We're one of the only cities, if you go online, that you will see listed that participates and is scored with the Park Score rankings, so we're pretty unique in that.
Even though we're not in the top 100 in population?
Yeah, and we still get a score, so we can see where we're going to lie, and that's the next slide, actually, so this is kind of the exciting part, so. So here is a history of our ranking, Protem Voss, as you alluded to here. You can see the history that we had in 2021, 2022, 23, and 24. We continue to rise in the rankings based on our score there. You could see we'd be just below number 16, Plano, Texas, and above Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. So Des Moines Parks and Recreation is certainly something to celebrate, is number 17 nationally, a top 20 park system considered by a national metric. It's one of our key metrics of the city, and you can see we score above cities like Omaha, Atlanta, Austin, Kansas City, St. Louis, and Milwaukee, just to name a few peer cities. So Des Moines is definitely a city that punches above our weight class and does so with the support of our partners, this council and leadership, and our many advocates and partners. So now we're going to dive into some of the actual metrics that you saw and discussed earlier on the second slide. So here you can see acreage and access. 13% of the City of Des Moines land is used for Parks and Recreation, and again, that includes Polk County, City, and other partners. 75% of our residents live within a 10-minute walk to a park, and down below you can see that that is a metric that has continued to rise by developing parks, acquiring new parks, and then working with Des Moines Public Schools and other partners, as well as Polk County.
Daniel, does 10 minutes from a trail also count?
Yes, yes, good point. Thank you for pointing that out. Yep, so a lot of our connections that we're making, like 16th Street Connection over there at Neil Smith, that'll be a really important factor, and we can probably expect to see our access go up again when that opens up to the public. Yep, key strategy. Okay, so then we move into investment. Here you can see, again, this is a three-year rolling average, so you can see we've highlighted the three last years in green there, and again, this is due to all of our partners, the federal state grants, Friends of Des Moines Parks, Icon, Polk County. Amenities, so we talked about the key amenities. The City of Des Moines is actually the 100th percentile in spray grounds, so a T-shirt will be coming soon about the nation's capital for spray grounds. Not sure where those proceeds might go, but in all seriousness, it's something to celebrate that we provide that kind of service that allows expanded hours and neighborhood access to a spray ground. Restrooms are at the 92nd percentile, so doing very well there as well, and that's a commitment that we've made, and Westegard, you pointed that out before, as well as others, the importance of having a restroom and allowing folks to stay longer at a park or trail. Dog parks were at the 65th percentile, and playgrounds were at the 60th, and hoops, basketball hoops, we are at the 40th percentile, so some improvement there could be made, and we'll get into that a little bit more here. Let me go back here. So equity, 77% of people of color in the Des Moines are within a 10-minute walk of a park. That's above the national average, so that's certainly something to celebrate, and again, a commitment that we've made to provide access to all our residents. There is a historic, large, legacy park discrepancy that creates some geographic inequalities just because of where those are located within a metropolitan area and how development occurred, and that's captured in the equity score. So strengths, what are our strengths in the Park Score? $179 per capita investment, that is again, rising over the last several years. Spray grounds, we are the top spray ground per capita in the nation. Restrooms at the 92nd percentile, and 77% of people of color within 10-minute walk of a park. So what are some of the opportunities that we see, or sorry, weaknesses that we see in our score? 75% of residents are within a 10-minute walk of a park, which is right at the national average. However, other peer cities and our commitment to provide additional access is something that we're working towards and look to have as an aspirational model for what a park system and city performs. Basketball hoops, we're at the 40th percentile, certainly something that we could look at, and we have been adding those incrementally where we see local preference and need for those. Cohen Park is an example, where we had a sport court that was a dual use, and then also the Des Moines Public Schools 28E playgrounds, we're at the 60th percentile. And then, again, historic, large, legacy parks are creating geographic acreage inequalities that are captured in the equity score.
Daniel, so I noticed that in Des Moines, we've made some investments in footsall courts.
Yep.
I gather this isn't measured, but in terms of what seems to be more popular, footsall is on the rise. I don't know if?
Yep.
Basketball's on the decline, but is there any? Would they consider footsall courts in calculating?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's a new amenity, it's an exciting amenity, we've seen a lot of interest in it. We've added that at Chesterfield Park after some community input in the the area there, and certainly gets a lot of use, so we did talk to them about that. What kind of amenities might you be adding? Are you adding amenities? And one of the things they're looking at is just that, can they add a broader offering of amenities, but because that is such a unique and new amenity, and because of our partnership that we have with the Kick It Forward and Musco, that presents kind of a specialized amenity that probably isn't as widespread yet throughout the nation, so they probably won't add it right away, but it's something certainly that they are looking at. So again, it's just another way that we're being innovated in the city, innovative in the City of Des Moines. And another thing they're looking at is also programming. It's not captured where programming is implemented in the parks, just because those metrics are hard to measure throughout 100-plus park systems in the the U.S. Opportunities, so we talked about that 28E. Here's some of those sites that opened up when we did that updated agreement. This provided 14,000 residents access to a park, 6,000 of which did not have previous access to a park, so that's pretty big increase and impact utilizing our our partners' resources and working with them. And you can see the bump from 73% to 75% of all residents having access to a park, and then 75 to 77 of our brown and black residents now have access to parkland. So pretty important stuff there, working with our partners on key opportunities. What are some opportunities looking forward in the next Park Score that we can expect with some of those investments? Protem Voss, you mentioned some of the trail access points are captured there, those are certainly going to be beneficial to the residents and our score. Basketball hoops, you can see we're adding some basketball hoops. Birdland Sports Park is going to have four, so it'll certainly help our amenity score. Spray grounds and playgrounds, we're continuing to make an investment there, replacing our waiting pools with spray grounds, and then continuing to input investment into our neighborhood parks. River View Park restroom just opened up, and that'll be captured in the subsequent year. And then also just looking at investment overall. ARPA was a huge infusion into our trails and park system, that certainly is reflected in our investment. Polk County has the land and legacy water bond, the lost funds, Icon, and our Friends at Des Moines Parks are really key for our investment and funding, three-year rolling average to continue to rise and increase our ranking.
And Daniel, are those the last three?
Waiting.
Waiting pools in the system?
Yep, so we actually took out Berg, it's under construction now. The last one remaining is Ashfield, and that'll be taken out in the fall here, so and then we'll start some engagement here and then get that kind of rolling as the next one, the final one.
Because Union Park has a spray area, but then there's also a waiting pool that's connected, and I know we always have to have a staff person.
Yep, and that one's a little bit different, so it's not a, it's not technically what we call a spray ground, it's a splash pool, so it's a little bit of a cross between the two, and it does require staffing, it has different hours, it has a filter system, so it's not a flow-through system.
And we'll always keep that?
So that's something that I think we'll have to look at operationally going forward, and just see as those facilities begin to age out or become?
Okay.
A maintenance or operational impact, we'll kind of see where we want to make a decision there.
It's hard to staff our waiting pool.
There's four of those.
Those four.
Yep, MLK, Cravaro, MLK, yeah, what was the other one? Thank you, yeah. Good question, yeah. All right, so possible future changes in the scoring methodology with TPL could affect our score, just something to be aware of. Another thing to remain cognizant of is as we look at these metrics, what are the the local needs and desires? We know those best, we work with our community, we do a lot of community engagement. Let's not let and be cognizant, again, of not chasing national scores and rankings, although we're doing well, to adverse and unintended impacts locally. And then also just being aware, when you do acquisition and other investments that could cause possible displacement if you're not careful about how that goes about, so again, just not chasing that national average score. So in closing, I'd just like to say thank you very much for all the support and allowing me to present today this very exciting update and celebration of a top 20 park system. It should also be highlighted, the continuing relationship with TPL and the City of Des Moines Parks and Recreation Department. We were one of three cities featured in 2022 in a special report that they released with Park Score. We presented to 50 peer cities on the communities of practice about our engagement and programming, and how innovative that is. We're certainly getting recognition, not only with our score, but with other programs and peers, and the City of Des Moines was awarded a $23,600 On Common Ground Grant to help to promote engagement, social interaction, and now is helping to fund some of the mobile recreation program play features. And Des Moines is the only city outside of the top 100 most populous park system officially scored and listed due to our involvement, engagement, and ongoing partnership with the TPL team, so I'd like to say thank you to the TPL team for all they do and for working with us. Thank you very much.
I think you get a standing ovation. But I do have one question. This one, when you talk about large legacy parks create geographic acreage inequities, are we just talking about big parks like like Grandview, Greenwood, Union Park?
Yep, that's a really good question, so that's basically telling us that that you can't look at the size of park when it comes to solving that gap for that 10-minute walk. Some neighborhoods might say we would like a large park, but that won't fit in the city that's as old as our city and built out. That would be more disruption, right? The key metric there is finding great partnerships, like we do with the school or with our friends at Public Works, where we do the stormwater detention pond combo park site, so yes, good question.
Okay, got it.
We still have an hour left if you guys have questions, so. Yep, please make the tour, I think you'll have a fun time.
Oh, hey, are pools? Are pools part of this?
They're they're not in the TPL Park Score.
Okay.
Yep, just like, we would like, your question, or we would like to see it be more broad, more amenities, so we can see how we're doing. For example, sometimes tennis may not be the most popular sport, it's going to move to pickleball, and so that'd be nice for us to understand with those limited capital dollars, do we invest in just pickleball, or do you do combo tennis and pickleball? So sports courts would be a better way to look at those instead of just basketball hoops, be kind of nice to know. Big pools are not in there, no.
Like a sports court?
Yep.
Could include a footsall?
Footsall, tennis, pickleball, basketball, could all be under sports courts.
Okay, well, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
And let's see, we don't have any proclamations this evening, so 5 o'clock meeting, we'll see you back here.
4 o'clock.
All right, thank you.